Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Johnson?
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for life. God, we thank you that we woke up and we got to do it again. And God, I say a special prayer for the entire Canton community, as well as the Appalachian Community, Father, and all the people that lost their lives and the families that were affected. And God, I just pray in the spirit of healing, God, for that entire community and that our leaders have the courage and the thought to come up with a sensible solution. And God, we lift up the mayor and the council and everyone here on staff. And we love you and we give you praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to call to order our September 2nd, September 5th, 2024 council meeting. And again, with the consideration to approve tonight's agenda, I do need to add an executive session to discuss litigation and real estate. Are there any other changes or revisions?
If there are no other changes, I've moved to approve the agenda as amended.
Second?
A motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for the motion. We have no guests and visitors join us this evening, so we, but we do have one public hearing to attend to before our business meeting, and that is public hearing, discussion, and possible action on appeal of the denial of cases VAR 2405-001, request to reduce 50-foot landscape buffer to 10 feet, and VAR 2405-002, request to reduce 50-foot building setback around the perimeter to 10 feet by the Board of Appeals. Mr. Green?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you just stated, this is a public hearing, appealing the denial of two of the five requested variances that the Board of Appeals denied several months ago. This application was scheduled for a public hearing last month. The applicant asked for a deferral until this meeting. And as you stated, their two requested variances is to reduce the required 50-foot buffer when different zonings abut one another down to 10 feet and the 50-foot setback line around the perimeter property to 10 feet. The other three variances that were denied, they are not appealing those.
Thank you, Mr. Green. At this point, we will open the public hearing. And is applicant or someone here to present to speak their case? If you please come forward, state your name clearly into the microphone and address.
Hey, y'all. Thanks for hearing us for our appeal. My name's Nick Whitson. I am the land acquisition manager for Eastwood Homes. I am here as the applicant. I just want to clarify that one of those, the setback, which is the second one, is actually to 20 feet, not to 10 feet. And I sent some documents over. I'm not sure if you have them. One is, looks like this. It's a satellite view of the hospital before it was demolished. I sent that one a little bit later, so I just want to make sure you have it before I start digging into that. And really, that image is to just kind of show the landscape. I thought this would be a better depiction than the zoning map, which shows a lot of different zoning categories. It could get a little confusing to show where, you know, we're right up on the commercial corridor and you've got this surrounding commercial and office use around most of the property, with some transitional residential that I noticed in the last hearing is kind of going through a potential rezoning to some other category. The townhouse site is just the northern block of that. If you were to cut that red block in half, that southern piece, those apartments that are currently in development. And that is really to lay out the land between all the different uses, because I want to start with the zoning definition for PD mixed use, which, after reviewing the code several times working on this project, I think is kind of a standalone category. For a standalone category compared to other residential uses. And it says, "The district is intended to provide for a creative, compatible, and connected mix of businesses, offices, and residential uses, which would otherwise not be permitted under the UDC because the strict application of zoning district or general development standards." And the primary intent of the district is to accommodate infill and redevelopment within the city, especially in these urban areas where you have a lot of old, small, non-conforming lots where, you know, we're trying to implement new stuff on old things. And I wanted to lay that out to kind of show that, you know, within the definition of the zoning category itself, the language says that there essentially is laying the groundwork that there can be some variations. So what would normally be a strict application of code interpretations in order to accommodate things like site design and the creativity of which we came up with. So if you're looking at the site itself, this was a, this site that we came up with, working with staff over three development, pre-development meetings. The original plan had, it was way less efficient than this. It had lots of stubbed-in roads and whatnot. So some of the first comments that we got in our first meeting was to have more flow and connectivity throughout the site, which is how we kind of came back to that U shape from the original illustrations from the zoning, the original zoning case. And we also got some comments about, you know, around the discussion that the existing residential in that area already faces out against the streets. So everything on the left side, we flipped around to kind of try to blend with the character area as it's, you know, kind of going in line with the intent of the code, which is to create that compatible connectivity with what's already existing. And also wanted to point out that lots of the existing residential structures in that area have front setbacks that are less than 20 feet, and the commercial kind of going up around there is probably between 30 and 35. So, you know, what we came up with, working with staff, is characteristically very similar to what already exists in the neighborhood and should provide like a pretty, a nice blend between what we have there. Another reason why we wanted to adjust the setbacks in the buffers from the interpretation is because landscape buffers don't allow you to put infrastructure in them. And so when we're trying to accommodate these recommendations, we run into hurdles where we can't make everything fit to, to kind of address the issues that were brought up during the pre-development. So by opening up the site a little bit more, it gives us more engineering flexibility. And as you can see on the northern side of that site, there's a, where there's a little more heavy tree planting there on the north than the east side. So that's because in a setback, you can actually plant landscaping. So the setback gives you more flexibility to make those landscaping accommodations. And then, you know, another thing to consider too is the existing buffers in the area, when you're looking at the tree canopy, is probably about 40 to 50 feet from a property line in both directions. In the interpretation of the code, you know, was, would really create like a cumulative 100-foot buffer. So when we get into the nuances of creating a 50-foot landscape buffer and we're utilizing some of the landscaping that's already there, we actually do kind of end up with a cumulative 40 to 50-foot tree canopy to try to accommodate that. And then also, going back in the definition and the intent of this standalone zoning category, it says that, you know, because, that we can try to make these kind of accommodations as we did with staff to come up with this design because of the circumstances of where it is, being an older site that's going through redevelopment, and then, you know, having some flexibility in that design to accommodate those things, as it says right here, that would not, you know, essentially working around the zoning, the strict application of the code or the standard requirements to come up with something that's really the best site that we could come up with, with staff. So just trying to lay that, all that out. If you have any questions, please feel free to, feel free to ask, and I'll try to address them as best as I can, because we could get really into the weeds. But by working with staff before and on the site, you know, we try to accommodate most of those issues.
Thanks, sir.
Do you all have any questions for me before I sit down?
We will entertain questions in the public hearing, so.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. We had no one else sign up to speak for this hearing, so I will close the public hearing at this time, and we'll open it up to council questions and discussions. Any questions for Mr. Green? I did want to start off by thanking our various Board of Appeals, who does great work for us and entertaining the five variances that were applied for by this applicant, and thinking, want to thank the applicant for accepting three of those denials, and as is their right, they have the right to appeal decision on the other two variances, which we heard tonight. So again, thanks to everyone working together to ensure the best development possible for our city. And Mr. Green, I had just a quick question on the 10-foot landscape buffer. It looks like it's around the entire perimeter of the property. Do we have stipulations as to that landscape buffer, what type of materials would be used there?
Yes, sir. It's supposed to be heavily landscaped with an opaque screening. When they submit for their land disturbance, for a mid-staff, we'll review that, the planning plan in there to make sure that it is an adequate buffer.
Okay. So even though they're asking to reduce that buffer, it still would require the opaque screening, correct?
Yes, sir.
And also see, the plans show a privacy fence around the entire perimeter. Do you know the materials being proposed there?
I do not know the exact materials. It would be my supposition that it would be a board fence.
Okay, okay. And then, I know I have not heard, and I've been speaking with the city manager, he's not received, I don't believe any council members have received feedback from residents on these two various appeals here. Have, has your office received any, Mr. Green?
No, sir. We've not received any comments one way or the other.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Green or comments?
Which, which one was 20 feet? The building setback or the landscape buffer?
The building setback.
And that's 20 feet from 50 feet, correct?
Yes, sir. That was a typo on my part.
Okay.
I guess I do have one.
Mr. Tom?
Somewhat rhetorical comment question. I guess for the record, there are no residential properties on the northern end of this applicant's property, correct?
No, sir.
Typically where you will get feedback from folks, and obviously by virtue of the fact that no one has shown up for the, in opposition at the public hearing, it sounds like it's perhaps smoother sailing.
Yes.
And you may not, how long has this property been zoned for, for this zoning? It's been a while, hasn't it?
I believe they went through the rezoning. It was zoned as you special use from the hospital was there. So it's been about two years, I believe, since they applied.
I kind of, Mr. Mayor, I kind of agree with Sean, the fact that you see a parking lot in the back of commercial buildings in that, in that area. You kind of see it up there on the north and I guess the east side. You know, if those residential units, it would be a little different, but I would say the folks that live in those apartments and townhomes would want some sort of buffer when they come in there to look, you know, to be able to see the landscape. So I can understand the applicant, you know, doing the best they can on their buffers to make sure it's screened for privacy. So I don't, I don't see a problem with reducing it, since it's went from five to two. You know, I think that that's pretty good. And I haven't heard anybody say anything in opposition, so.
I know we had possible action on the agenda. Again, we had no one speak at the public hearing. We've had no additional public input. So I think if council wanted to take action tonight, it would be appropriate. If not, we do have our next meeting this month. Just to remind everyone, will be next Thursday and not the third Thursday due to adjustment on schedule. We couldn't wait till next week, or we could entertain a motion this evening.
I'll be happy to make a motion if there were other questions.
Mr. Roach?
Make sure I read it correctly. I make a motion to approve the two variances, request one 50-foot, changing one 50-foot landscape buffer to 10 feet. Excuse me, 20 feet. Or no, that's, is the landscape buffer and the?
Landscape buffer and the setback to 10.
The landscape buffer is from 50 to 10. The building setback is from 50 to 20.
20, okay. So we'll do the landscape buffer from 50 to 10 feet and reduce the building setback from 50 to 20 feet. I make a motion to approve.
Second? So we have a motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Mr. Green. You have in your packet the draft minutes from our August 15th meeting. Are there any revisions, changes, or motions?
Mr. Mayor, if there aren't any revisions or changes, I would like to make a motion that we approve the minutes as written.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for the motion. We have a couple, a couple of informational items this evening. Item A is review of the July financials. Ms. Forrester?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have in your packet this evening the financials for July 2024, and I wanted to comment on just a few highlights from this activity. There's $1,130,637 of ARPA funds that have been loaned to the Canton Housing Authority. That's reflected on the financials. This project is to kickstart construction of a 70-unit multifamily residential apartment complex to be known as Tanner Place on Ship Street in Canton. The housing and community development projects are in eligible use of state and local fiscal recovery funds. Canton tourism was provided with a distribution of $210,670 from the hotel motel tax fund. As an authorized 501(c)(6) destination marketing organization, Georgia Code stipulates that 43.75% of hotel motel tax revenues must be used to promote tourism, conventions, and trade shows. The Sequoia Regional Library System was provided with a distribution of $30,000 from the rental car tax fund to support facilities and services to educate citizens in ways that promote industry, trade, and commerce. I also wanted to note that the financials you have in your agenda packet include the final sales tax receipt from our SPOLOST 7. So this, sales taxes for the month of June were remitted by retailers to the state in July and paid to the city in August, in total $552,000. SPOLOST 7 was originally expected to collect $24,613,045 for the city of Canton, over six years that began in July of 2018. The city has since collected $32,644,314 in SPOLOST money. This is $8,031,000 more than anticipated and a 32.63% increase over estimates. And if you recall, SPOLOST funds are capital project fund, so their spending is stipulated in an intergovernmental agreement for capital projects and improvements. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Forrester. Great news on the last SPOLOST, and we'll equally optimistic opinions of the upcoming SPOLOST that will also exceed estimates there. So any questions for Ms. Forrester? Mr. Johnson?
Ms. Forrester, can you repeat again the ARPA funds? It was one point? All right. And my second question was, I'm sorry if I don't understand exactly how this works, but is there or can there be any interest collected on those ARPA funds? Or is it a deal that you just get?
The ARPA money can be invested for interest earnings, but we have, we have not done that. Most of our ARPA money had already been allocated to the general fund, so the general fund's earning money as it sits in the fund balance. It's not necessarily the ARPA funds not earning that interest.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
One question, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Forrester, as it relates to the, I think you said 1.7 million and some change loaned to the housing authorities. I recall that we had committed to loan them up to $2.8 million. So what's, what's the difference or where is that difference? Is, is that delta still available for them to borrow for either Tanner or the newer Oakside project?
We did provide the 2.8 million. The remainder that's not ARPA money was general fund money.
Okay.
But if you recall, the general fund, fund balance, a large portion of that was ARPA money. Remember, we transferred 10 million of ARPA to the general fund.
Yes.
Last year.
Okay.
So what we're trying to do is we're trying to draw down all of our ARPA funds before expiration to obligate that money, which is December 31st.
Of this year?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else? As always, Ms. Forrester's available for questions. Thank you, Ms. Forrester. Item B, again, is for your information only. It is an upcoming case, so no discussion, just to put this on everyone's radar. That is for annexation ANNX 2405-008, rezoning RZON 2404-011, and conditional use permit CUP 2404-012 for 1610 Butterworth Road, 1618 Butterworth Road, and 8420 Knox Bridge Highway for proposed townhome development. Mr. Green?
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you stated, these three cases affect 6.0108 acres on property that fronts on Knox Bridge and Butterworth Road. And the applicant is seeking to rezone the property to RA8 to construct 41 townhomes. Within the application, he also has a concurrent variance requested to reduce the 50-foot buffer where the property will abut unincorporated Cherokee County down to 25 feet. You'll be getting a staff report for next Thursday's meetings that will have a little bit more meat to it. This is scheduled to go before the public hearing in October.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Appreciate that heads up. For announcements, I would like to, to announce that our Downtown Development Authority will be meeting next Wednesday, September 11th, 10:00 a.m. in this room in the auditorium. One of the items on their agenda is to be discussing the proposed downtown master plan and for any upcoming recommendations to council. So if anyone would like to weigh in on that downtown master plan, again, we had lots of public input sessions on that, and, but again, that is proposed and will be discussed by the Downtown Development Authority next Wednesday, 10:00 a.m. in this room. So any other announcements? Okay, we'll move into our 10-minute public input. We have two residents sign up to speak. Mr. Bill Kell, as usual, please come forward, state your name and address clearly into the microphone. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor and the city council, my name is Bill Kell. I live at 140 East Marietta Street, Suite 301 in historic downtown Canton. And I'm actually here tonight to get a little jumpstart on the Canton master plan. I've spent some time studying that in the last couple of weeks, and I found one what I consider a significant flaw in the recommendations. When we were in this room looking at all the ideas, they were talking about making Main Street two-way. Well, now on the plan, it is one-way, and they have allocated one small spot below the gazebo park for flex, which includes deliveries. We have three restaurants in downtown Canton. Going Coastal receives 15 to 20 deliveries per week, if not more. These come in everything from a box truck to a van, some of them even in 14-wheeler semi-trucks. You're going to have 12 restaurants in historic downtown Canton soon. I don't think they'll all get 15 to 20, but they will all get 10 to 15. Plus, you have FedEx and you have UPS. So a one-way street with only one small delivery area is going to be a disaster. And we've had comments that say, well, just ask your delivery people to deliver someplace else. These guys don't ask you where you want it delivered. They load their truck, and when your stuff, they get to your stuff in the truck, they're going to be at your front door, and they're going to offload it. And in fact, we can't tell them when to deliver, deliver it. When they get here, they deliver it. If you make it too hard for them, they will stop delivering. And that would be a disaster for what we're trying to do throughout the city of Canton. So keep that in mind as you think about what we're, how we can solve that. Maybe there is a solution. Maybe give me another flex zone in front of the old post office. Give me another flex zone in front of San Luis Bank. But they've got to be big enough to handle the flow of the deliveries coming into downtown Canton. The other issue I have is the timing and how critically important it is for whoever has this contract. And I know, I know you're a long way from a contract, so I'm not there. But when this gets underway, you know, everybody who's been in our business since COVID should have recovered their revenue post-COVID, and we have. We've also incurred COVID cost. And so it's not like business is great right now. Revenue is, cost or not. We could not stand a major disruption that makes our customers second guess whether or not they want to fight a construction development in downtown Canton. I don't know what the solution to that would be, other than real careful planning on how this would be implemented, so we're not completely disrupting the businesses. And it's not all restaurants. I mean, we'd like to have more retail shops down there, but the ones that are there get deliveries just like we do. So that's it. That's all I have. Keep it in mind, put it in your head, and think about it.
Thank you, Mr. Kell. Appreciate it. Mr. Thomas Weaver?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Thomas Weaver. I reside at 131 Old Marietta Road here in Canton, Georgia. Thank you for recognizing me to speak, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I was walking along in the sunny side portion of town where I live, and keeping on the sunny side, as I was enjoying the gentle chill in the air that autumn has arrived and those vibrant Jasper and Emerald green. and those vibrant Jasper and Emerald Greens are slowly fading to a lighter hue and all the amber tones that I've come to enjoy of North Georgia for years. I was noticing all of the new purple and yellow sunny side placards on the poles that had been installed by our Public Works Department. And as I was crossing the Canton Creek Bridge, an approbation of that project that is pending that has formerly been presented by your city manager, city engineer, I noticed from my peripheral vision as I peered over the edge that it appears that the Canton Creek itself has become sort of a quagmire kind of sluice. It appeared as if there was a large tree trunk or something, some type of debris that had become lodged, maybe perhaps from the storm, perhaps, in the creek bed itself that was causing the water to not be able to flow as well. And I believe that the city has experienced or encountered this before in regards to the Etowah River Bridge when debris piles up there underneath the metal beams. I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the city. No, it's not a complaint, like I shared with Ms. Watson prior to the council meeting this evening. It's not a complaint. I just wanted to share that Canton Creek isn't properly flowing and is starting to become a quagmire for mosquitoes and other rodents. It's not working well. But, Mr. Mayor, thank you for recognizing me to speak, and thank you for allowing me to share that.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. We'll move into our old business tonight. We have two items. Item A, discussion and possible action to award the contract for annual financial auditing services. Ms. Forrester?
Hello again. We are asking for a motion to award the annual financial auditing services contract to Rushton LLC with services starting with September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. And this is per an RFP that was issued on July ninth and with a due date of July thirty-first. The city received four proposals. One is from the incumbent service provider, and that is the one we are recommending to you. After comparison of technical and price proposals, all in excess of forty thousand dollars annually, the review committee recommends council award a contract to Rushton LLC for the three consecutive fiscal years, beginning with the current fiscal year, through September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six, with renewal availability to September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-eight. We anticipate that the first-year cost for an audit and a single audit of the financials will be at fifty-six thousand dollars. And I'm glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Forrester. We reviewed this at our last meeting. Are there any questions for Ms. Forrester tonight?
May I make a motion?
Yes, sir.
To make a motion to award annual financial auditing services to Rushton LLC with services starting with the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
A motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Ms. Forrester.
Thank you.
Item B, discussion of the approval of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Mr. Dotson, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. About ten to eleven months ago, we started the process with Branstadter Carroll to develop a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The first ever Parks Recreation Master Plan for the city of Canton. And over the last ten to eleven months, Branstadter has worked with the community stakeholders, community leaders to get to where we are right now with a final draft of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. I do believe all of y'all have been given a copy of this and staff understands and recognizes that over the last few weeks with the downtown master plan and short turnaround to the next council meeting. Staff is going to plan to attend the October third meeting where it will ask for the recommendation or give the recommendation to award the, or, I'm sorry, to accept the Parks and Recreation Master Plan as it is written. If, for whatever reason, the hundred-and-forty-page-plus document, you have any questions or concerns, please have them ready for the next meeting. I will have representatives from BCI with me to address any of those questions or possibly implement any changes that you guys would like to, to have in the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Dotson. You're, you're correct that the plan is extensive and long and exciting, but certainly requires a lot of thought and review. So the extension is greatly appreciated. Allow us to do our homework a little bit longer, so. Are there any questions for Mr. Dotson at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move into new business now. Item A, discussion of resolution of support authorizing the preparation, submission, and funding commitment of a Georgia outdoor stewardship program grant application, pre-application for the River Mill Pedestrian Bridge project. It's a lot. Ms. Watson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is a resolution of support for staff to submit an application for a grant for the River Mill Pedestrian Bridge. The max match is three million dollars from the grant itself, so staff will be requesting the three million from the grant, and then the city would be responsible for the additional funding. So, which is a fifty-two percent match based on the estimate provided by Heath and Lineback, plus a twenty percent contingency and the put-in, take-out, the canoe launch. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
We appreciate your work on this. We're always happy to entertain grant applications. And you're not asking for action this evening, are you?
No, sir.
Okay, okay. Any questions for Ms. Watson on this? We look forward to more details there, so. Item B, discussion of the procurement policy for federal and state-funded transportation projects. Ms. Watson?
So as part of our LAP application, I'm sorry, local administered project application, we are required to adopt GDOT's procurement policy for the federal and state-funded projects. We adopted this back in two thousand and twenty with our original certification. We're up for recertification now, so we just need to re-adopt this policy per the requirements of the LAP certification. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any changes to the policy since the last time we?
No, sir. Exactly the same.
Any questions? Ms. Watson?
Ms. Watson, adopting the, I guess, the method, is the method audited at any point?
Yes.
Yes.
Continuously. We have audits about twice a year on this, this whole.
And, and who's the audit, auditing body?
GDOT.
GDOTs.
GDOT audits.
They audit.
The city.
The city, okay. Thank you.
Item C, discussion of River Mill Trail Design to BCC Engineering LLC. Doing business as Heath and Lineback in the amount of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-six cents. Ms. Watson?
Thank you. So as you know, there is a remaining portion of the trail across from the mill in Etowah that is not complete. We've asked Heath and Lineback to provide a proposal to finish that portion of trail or design it with the River Mill Pedestrian Bridge. This will help with, with, with the design of the bridge and the connection points. It includes approximately seventeen hundred linear feet of ten-foot-wide trail on that side of the trail, and it will connect from the existing train link fence to where the trail is currently extended to. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
And what is the anticipated timeframe for, for this?
It would be completed around the time that the River Mill Pedestrian Bridge would all be conjoined together as one project, so that it could all be done simultaneously.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Watson on that item? Hearing none, we'll move right along to discussion of caustic tank and line replacement at Canton Water Treatment Plant to REMTEC engineers remediation specialists in the amount not to exceed sixty-five thousand dollars, two hundred and sixty-eight, sixty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. Ms. Watson?
Thank you. So the caustic tank and lines at the water treatment plant are in disrepair and need to be replaced. This will replace the downstairs, downstairs, not downtown, the downstairs tank, the existing lines and the upstairs day tank for the caustic. And as you can see in the pictures, it's, they're in very bad shape and need to be replaced. But I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Ms. Watson, with these, with this line replacement, is this a sort of an upgrade? I, I guess in terms of product to product, and how long will this last us?
No, so it will be replaced with similar of what is existing. There's not any upgrades or not make it, the tanks won't be any larger than they already are. There is an option, and staff would request that we go ahead with the additional option for five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars, which is included in this price. To have a portable tank in the day tank area, that would help for replacements in the future because the day tank is, has to be replaced more often than the larger holding tank in the, in the downtown, down, downtown, downstairs area. I've got downtown master plan on my mind. And so this would, would help in the future to, to not have to redo the whole, the entire thing every time the tank becomes in disrepair. Caustic soda is very basic, so it, it tears things up pretty easily. And after some times, they have to be replaced pretty frequently.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Tolan?
Ms. Watson, would you, for the benefit of the public, would you explain what a caustic tank is?
Sure. So caustic soda is used for pH adjustment most frequently. It does help with disinfection purposes. The reason why you would want to see a lower pH is it helps with corrosion. And it, that's, I mean, that's the main reason why you would use it. Some, some water plants use it as help with coagulation and flocculation as well. And it helps create a larger flock, which is easier to settle.
Crystal clear.
Get that? Ms. John?
How often does this have to be done typically?
That's a great question. I'm not sure I can, I'll find that answer out for you and get it.
When was the last time, do you know, that we had to do this?
I'm, I'm not sure. I, I think that it's been since I've been here, which is ten years. So it looks the same as it did when I got here. But now, since the lines are actually leaking, it's, it's got to be replaced.
Further questions? And item D, discussion of street acceptance for city maintenance for streets in summer walk towns?
Thank you. So the streets in summer walk towns have met the requirements of the Development Code and have reached the eighteen-month maintenance period and ready for acceptance. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Watson on that item? And I assume all your items will be on the next agenda for approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Watson.
Thank you.
Mr. Peppers?
Good evening. Just a few items for you tonight. On August the twenty-sixth, the letter came out from Georgia EPD. I actually received this, I think, on Tuesday, so the mail is starting to work again. That's a good thing. It says, "The Environmental Protection Division has received your correspondence requesting that the city be authorized to operate the water pollution control plant," that's the sewer plant, "at six million gallons per day under our permit. On May ninth, EPD conducted an operability inspection to verify construction completion, and the facility was ready to begin operation. No deficiencies were found during the inspection. Your engineer has certified the project was constructed in accordance with the submitted plans and specifications. EPD hereby authorizes the city of Canton to begin operation of the Canton Water Pollution Control Plant in accordance with that permit at six million gallons per day effective September first." So that's a good news for us. We still have construction going on at the plant, but now we are fully authorized to operate at six million gallons a day for water treatment. Another item that came out this week, we received, we received an email from the Department of Audits and Accounts. In the last legislative session, the General Assembly enacted House Bill eleven oh five, which is called the Georgia Criminal Alien Track and Report Act of two thousand and twenty-four. Basically, the, the bill is written in such a way that local law enforcement agencies across the state are required to have some forms of memorandums of agreement other law enforcement agencies as it relates to criminal, the presence of criminal illegal aliens. There are sections of the law that are not required by the city because we don't operate our own jail. The police chief, and I gave a copy of this to the city attorney as well, are looking at it. We have to have, according to this, we have to have everything in place, including those agreements, by December thirty-first of this year. So you may hear some things coming up in the next couple of months that we might be required to do under this new law. But like I said, that was just given to us by the Department of Audits and Accounts earlier this week. After the last city council meeting, the Downtown Development Authority on August nineteenth made a purchase of property on North Street, purchasing three parcels that are between property that they already own, known as the Bray and Johnson Law Office and Cherokee County Courthouse. As, as part of that, Mr. Ingram and I put together a letter that has been sent to all of the residents of the Cherokee North Apartments. And I'll just read this to you quickly, so you'll, you'll hear what, what was sent out to them. It says, "The city of Canton's Downtown Development Authority purchased the Cherokee North Apartments property on August nineteenth, neighboring parcels to the east. This property, along with the adjacent land at the corner of Brown Street and North Street, include retail office, potential residential hotel, and a joint parking deck for the city of Canton and Cherokee County Courts. We entered into the purchase agreement with the former owners because the city and our Downtown Development Authority are committed to working with the existing residents of Cherokee North Apartments on longer-term housing solutions. Had the property sold to a private developer or the county, the attention as part of our purchase agreement, we have retained the former owners' property managers for the next year. As such, your leases and lease rates will be honored for the next twelve months regardless of the length of your current lease. Prescott Hall LLC will continue to be your contact for maintenance and for lease payment. For the next couple of months, the city and Downtown Development Authority will be working with private engineers on a survey of the properties for the new development as well as master planning of the project. During this time, we would also like the opportunity to learn more about your needs so that we can be prepared to assist with the transition plan in our city as the project progresses past the next twelve months. And then we've listed both mine and Mr. Ingram's contact information. The DDA also approved a, a contract with Goodwin Mills and Kaywood GMC. It's an architectural engineering firm that's done a lot of metropolitan, town center-style projects to work over the next several months with the DDA and other stakeholders on some master planning of that site to give us an idea of what could be built there, what it might look like, how it might function within the downtown area. Those meetings will probably start late this month. And, and of course, we'll be working with the DDA to, to pull in a list of potential stakeholders to be involved in that discussion. So I wanted to give you an update on that. Lastly, I wanted to mention to you, under my time, that Saturday is our multicultural festival. This will be a little bit of a different year for us this year. The event's been moved to Harmon Park, so we can celebrate that new park and that part of our community in Sunny Side. We're very excited about the fact that we've got the mini-pitch filled there. That's going to make it a better place for a soccer tournament that we have every year. The Police Department, Communications, Parks and Recreation, Public Works have been working very hard on this event. The Police Department, Communications, Parks and Recreation, Public Works have been working very hard on this event. If, if citizens never been there, they might want to consider it. It's, it's pretty, it's, it's pretty unique. There's usually a couple dozen different countries that are represented. Free food representing all of those countries. It is not sponsored by Tums, but let me tell you, those Nigerian chicken gizzards are really spicy. There's, there'll be entertainment. There are resources there that are available for the community. Of course, we'll have a large staff presence there. Just lots of great activities for the community that are coming out. That event, we have flyers. It's up on our social media. That event starts at 11:00 a.m. It's free. Pretty much everything that there is there is free, and I know our team's been working hard. You'll come out and enjoy that. It unofficially starts our Hispanic Heritage Month that we celebrate every year as a city, which is basically September 15th, October 15th. And so it's a good kickstart for that, so. I have asked Mr. Ingram to provide you with a little bit of an update on some storm damage that we had last week on our 151 Elizabeth Street Public Safety Municipal Court Complex. As you recall, we have a roofing project that's going on over there, and we had a pretty significant storm come through Friday afternoon into the downtown area. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ingram, so he can give you some comments on that.
Thank you, Ms. Peppers. That was all I was going to say, sir. Now, earlier this week, many of you on council asked about an update on that building, and I've provided a timeline of events that has a lot of details. I'd encourage you, please read those. If you have any further questions, by all means, get, get back out to us. But if you don't mind, can I summarize for those in the audience and those online that may be aware of what occurred? As Mr. Peppers mentioned, around Friday, August 30th, last Friday, between the hours of 3:00 to 4:00, we had a very significant line of thunderstorms that came through the city of Canton. Had a lot of driving rain, a lot of wind associated with it. And also, as Mr. Peppers mentioned, that we are currently in the middle of re-roofing our Public Safety Building. Perfect timing. But at about 4:00, Public Works, Mr. Brandon Poole, our facilities manager, he gave me a call and said, "We're, you know, water's leaking at the Public Safety Building." I thought to myself, you know, "We're having a new roof put on it." So that's with this storm that just came through. It was terrible. It really doesn't surprise me. He called me a few minutes later when he arrived on scene. He said, "No, we have a leak." And so I immediately informed Mr. Peppers, and he and I both said, "We're heading over there." When I got there, I didn't expect to find that it was raining inside the building and not raining outside the building. That's how bad it was, right in the foyer, right in front of Municipal Court. Mr. Poole and I quickly got on the phone, trying to find a water remediation company. We called a couple that we had worked with in the past, and we did get into contact with Southeast Restoration. By that time, the chief, deputy chief, and let me stop here and give some kudos to the whole team in Public Safety, the police officers, the Records Department of Police, Municipal Court staff, IT. When I got over there, everyone was bailing water. That's how bad it was. Bringing water out in buckets, outside, vacuuming the water out of the carpet. It was a pretty significant event. So kudos to all those, everybody lending a hand and helping out. But we got in touch with Southeast Restoration. They came, they got on site at about 6:30, and they were there for a number of hours. Appreciate the chief. He had one of his, some of his folks that were going to stay there in the building while they were there, you know, for the present. So I appreciate him opening and keeping open the Public Safety Building. But they did a great job of remediating any further water, putting, setting up dehumidifiers, fans everywhere, trying to air out and get some of that moisture out. Southeast Restoration, they came back a couple of times through the weekend, the holiday weekend, to dump humidifier water bowls and make sure that the fans are still working. So we appreciate that. Tuesday morning, staff had a meeting onsite at 7:00 to discuss the operations. Knowing, you know, all of the events that occurred and the damage that happened, we had some operational changes to make. We moved operations of Municipal Court, moved those to the front desk, and we had to move, therefore, we had to move records up to the, or down, sorry, downstairs to the basement. We had to remove, move the sergeant's office upstairs. So we had to move a number of individuals. So I appreciate their patience as we interrupted their operations this week and will be interrupted for the coming weeks. Also, one thing I want to comment is we've got a current project, an HVAC project with Schneider in that building. And we had to reach out to Schneider and say, "Say, you need to hold off on this project for just a couple of weeks because we're going to have to have, move some operations around that may interrupt your project." And they're, they were very receptive of that, and we appreciate them holding that, holding off on their project for a couple of weeks. But as of this week, SR, Southeast Restoration, they've gotten in there, and you'll, you'll probably drive by the building and see big tubes coming out the window, anti-mold and anti-moisture equipment in there, trying to extract and recirculate clean, sterile air to reduce and mitigate the potential mold and get all the water out of the building. We expect that to occur or to be ongoing for approximately 10 days. And, and then at that time, when all of the moisture is remediated from the building, I think we're going to have a meeting and see where we go from there. See what type of renovation then is required, replacing some sheet rock, replacing some insulation, carpet, et cetera. My last comment will be, since we do have the HVAC project going on, there's going to be some construction that may, or some renovation that may be delayed. For example, ceiling tile, ceiling tiles, just because that may actually help out HVAC if we don't, you know, replace some of the tiles. So it's a very, it's going to be a very active site, construction site for the next couple of weeks. And I mentioned to y'all in my briefing that I'll give you an update next week at your council meeting. But if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me. Mr. Peppers will get an answer to your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram.
Thank you.
Did y'all have any questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Peppers at this time? We know where to find you. Thank you. Just double-check and make sure there's no council-introduced items. And again, I just wanted to thank the entire team for the response to the damage at the Public Safety Building. And that's what we do in Canton. When there's unexpected emergencies, we come together and work as a team to resolve them as quickly as possible. So thanks, everyone, for the quick response and your ongoing efforts to improve that facility for our Police Department. And great news about the authorization to increase the treatment capacity at the sewer plant. It's been a long time coming, and it's great that we were approved without any issues on the new sewer plant and can immediately begin to, to treat up to 6 million gallons per day. So that's going to have a great impact on our, our future here, so. I have nothing else to add at this moment. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive discussion session to discuss real estate and litigation.
Let's make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate and litigation.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye. Pose name. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.